We'd like to open with prayer, so if everybody would stand. Dear kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, and we thank you for the opportunity that you have given each one of us to serve this great city. We ask God for your guidance, for your leadership, and for your direction in everything that we do every day. We ask God that you would bless this meeting, that your will would ultimately be done in everything that we say and do today. It's in your precious holy name that we ask, amen. Attention, salute, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have actually been on the council now for, we're getting close to a year, November will be a year. And we're trying to do the right thing on everything that we do, trying to make sure that we take care of the citizens of Fort Payne. And Wade has graciously put together a capital improvement plan and wanted to present to the council today. So at this time Wade, if you want to tell us about your plan.
All right, thanks Brian. I think we're at the point in our lives here in Fort Payne where we've got to make an important decision. We started last year, even before this time, gathering facts and getting information because three of us are new council members. So we were trying to find out what was going on, how things were looking. We've got two incumbents that came back on board, so the five of us have spent the last nine months together trying to figure out where Fort Payne's going to go. We know where we are, so we want to know where we're going to go and how we're going to get there. So we did a little research and put things together and compiling the numbers that we needed to come up with, the things that we needed to do, the things that people here want to do that have been given to us as candidates and now council members. We tried to put together a wish list of what we need to do to go forward. So, and starting with that, we go to where we are money-wise. And our general fund revenues, you'll notice, took a big dip several years ago. We lost several hundred jobs. This city has been so resilient and overcoming what would have totally devastated a lot of other communities. We literally lost thousands of jobs, millions of dollars of revenue, and it's taken about seven years to come back to where we were. We were in a good position, and we're in a staple position now, but we're in a position where we've got to do some additional things to move forward. So the revenues, as you can see, were good, but our fund expenses are moving also. So you can track our revenues and our expenses over the last several years, and they kind of mirror one another. And then when you put them together on the same graph, you get a better idea of where we are, up and down. And you can see the reddish color here, that's expenses, and the gray color is revenue. So for several years, we've been right at, slightly below, or sometimes quite a bit over, our revenue. So that's not a position you can maintain long-term. It's not been a terribly drastic deal, but there have been years where we've been over by it, and then we cut expenses. I will give Johnny Red credit, Johnny's been here 21 years, Red's going on now. They've done a great job of doing what they had to do to run the city with the revenue that we had to run it with. But the sad fact is that everybody around us raised taxes in the 90s, and Fort Payne didn't. We've been running on sales tax revenue that was initiated in 1984. We hadn't had an increase since then. So they've done an admirable job of keeping us afloat. But to move forward and grow, we've got to do some other initiatives here. Sales tax is our major general fund revenue. We're getting some adult oral taxes. And you can get a copy of the audit if you want to see exactly what our revenues and expenses are. But you see, in '08, '08 to '09, we went down 10, we bottomed out, then we started climbing back up. So it took seven years to get back to where we were. That's seven years of lost revenue. So we had reserves in place that offset that, that maintained that balance. And we're to the point now where our reserves are getting to a point where we need to work on them. One of the things a lot of people talk about is, oh, you've got alcohol tax, and that's quite a bit of money. Well, it's not as much money as you think. Alcohol tax peaked at $374,000 and is steadily declining. It's going down again this year because everybody around us goes with pull sales from Fort Payne. Out of that $374,000, and then this past year was a little over 3, we give that all to the schools and to other entities. So the city gets no benefit from that money whatsoever. We just handle that money. We receive it and quarterly we give it out. So we give the schools 75%, another 25% goes to economic development and other things. And I think we basically banked $500 off of that one year for handling and interest and whatever. But our bond debt, on the other hand, is a number that you want to see go down. So you can see in '08, we had 23.8 million, and '15, it's down to 13.2. We're on track to pay our bond debt off in '25. Okay, '25, that does sound like a long time, but we're paying it off with a few million dollars at a time. That money comes in, it goes out. The problem with our bond debt issue that I see is everything that we've got those bonds for has now got some age on it, and we can't repair or replace some of these things without additional money. So if we continue to pay our bond debt down, we've got to look at what we're going to do to put money in to do new things, to expand our beneficial things for our citizens. So yeah, our sales tax is going up, our bond debt's going down, but our revenues and expenses are kind of paralleling each other to the point where we're not gaining any real ground there. We've got one bond that pays off, they've got a payment next month, and then we've got one more next year. That will free up $750,000 a year. We've got another bond that pays out, and it's way on down the road, it's like six, seven years out. So it will potentially save us $800,000 a year, but we're talking about six, seven years down the road. We've got to make some decisions now to see where we're going to be in six or seven years. We can't wait to get to that point. So as our bond debt comes down, we're in a position now, we're one notch, I believe Randy said, one notch below our top rating that we could have as a bond-capable entity. So we're in a great position to get some money if we need it. So if you're going to get bond money, what are you going to do? Pay for it. So we've got some decisions to make. This is the most graphic chart that we've got, is our cash reserves, and you can see the steady decline there. And that is to offset drops in revenue or purchases of capital. So yeah, we peaked out in 2010 at over $12 million, but we're down a little over 6 now. So that's a serious decline. What we're having to do now is basically take money out of our savings account to pay some of our bills. We're having to shift money around to do certain things. So if we're going to get in a position to do something, now's the time to do it. And this is one of the main reasons we've got to do that. And you say, well, you've got $6 or $7 million in the bank. That's not a lot of money when you've got a multimillion-dollar facility that you have to keep up, and that's the city of Fort Payne. Our payroll runs close to half a million dollars every two weeks. We've got benefits. We've got employees that want to get raises eventually. We gave them a raise this past year. The raise that we just gave in November and the insurance that we assumed to increase in cost the city over $300,000. But that was the right thing to do, and we did it. We still passed a budget. And to do that, we had to eliminate over a million dollars worth of capital request in one day, and we did that. We sat down, we took it on, we did it. We gave our employees a raise, and we still passed a budget that showed basically a $70,000 surplus if everything goes well this year. So when we get into the situation where we're at now, we've got to have things that we have to do. We've got short-term projects. And I say short-term because I used to do three, five, 10, and 20-year plans. Our plan right now is one to five. This is what I consider a short-term project, something we've got to fund in the next short term. Number one is an Aldott project that you're going to be seeing here pretty quickly. When the state comes in and brings us our funding agreement, we're going to proceed with a totally revamped and new interchange system at the 218 exit. You will have both sides of the interstate be totally redone. Airport Road and Jordan Road will be lined up facing each other, and there will be turn lanes put in place where people can turn from all four directions with a turn lane. And if you get a lones, you can actually get back to Fort Payne without wasting a day to do it. Our next thing is our sewer plant. The bond that's paying off next year was primarily to fix up the sewer plant 20-plus years ago. Things wear out, but things at sewer plants wear out quicker because they're 24/7, 365. There's always something going through there. You've always got to deal with maintenance issues. So to work on that plant, get some things fixed that we need to fix and do some improvements all there, we're looking at around $2 million there. Next, we've got the police department building, which was built in the 40s. It now houses our 911, our police department, our jail, the theater. We've got to do some major work on the marquee, and we've got to make a decision on how we're going to redo the front facade of that. What we'd like to do is go back to retro. It looks like neon, but it's not neon because it is just so expensive to keep up. We want to keep the look of that theater because it's part of our downtown heritage and our culture. The Doe Building is the building at 5th and Godfrey. We agreed to purchase that building, turn it into a military-style museum right across from War Patriots Park. It's going to be built, but that's going to take money to purchase and renovate. We're going to take the metal building off of it. It will be a freestanding building once again. And then the metal building behind it will turn into our maintenance shop for our building crew. They will have their own building where they can store their stuff and work out there. The Cullen Iron Building has to have the total upstairs fenced. We're downstairs complete and everything. Upstairs has got to be addressed. We want to try to do that this winter. We've got our crew that's going to do that, but it's going to take money to do that. The pool needs major renovations or a look at replacing. It was built back in the 80s. It was built on leased property. The city had to go back and buy the pool back from the property owner. So it is actually ours now, but it's built in the 80s. So 30 years is a lot of wear and tear on things that get a lot of use. The sports complex was built, I think, in 1986. The pool was built right after that. The complex in its heyday was as good as anything in Alabama. Something we were all proud of as we had our kids go through it, and now my grandkids are playing up there. But you can't have anything last 30 years without having to have smoke rats. We've got to have major renovations to the bathrooms and the concession area. We've got to address the situation there of how we're going to do and how extensive we're going to do and what we've got to build. We had a major electrical deal we had to fix this year. Johnny was instrumental in getting that done. So everything up there has got to be fixed. And what a lot of people don't understand, and we were there when it happened, and Johnny saw this, they built that place as good as they could with the money they had. They got a lot of donated money for the soccer fields and the ball fields. So there was wire buried all over that place that was, directly buried wire, but it's got a lifespan. Well, we're in its lifespan now. So we've got to address, whether we've got to redo all that, what kind of doing wire, how we're going to do that, things like that. And they all cost a lot of money. So we've got a lot of stuff there. I'll just kind of assign a million dollars to those projects, and it would take much more than that. But it would take that just to minimally get those to a point of doing something. Our sanitation department is a point in their lifespan where we've got to expand the footprint in a few years. We've got to bank a million to, to close the current landfill, make it a nice big green grassy field, move up the valley. We've got to buy some more property to move some holding ponds up there to catch our runoff. That's all going to take money. We took a garbage truck we needed out of the budget. We're going to put that back in. That's a quarter of a million dollars. We're in a roll-off truck. We've got a roll-off truck that's making 160 trips a year hauling materials. It's the safest way, but it's getting worn out. If you can see the miles and the hours on the fleet at the sanitation department, you would be surprised that they run as efficiently as they do. They do generate revenue to support themselves, but we're to the point where we've got to make some capital investments to improve the fleet over there. So the Aldott project. These are the motels, and this is Dunn's. This is going north on 50. When we get the next big pretty picture, it will be around about here, around about here, and this road will shift over and line up. A $5 million project, we've been asked to commit $1 million to. The next project is the sewer plant infrastructure. This plant was built way before me. I remember when I was a kid, the sewer plant was at South White. We've come a long ways from there. I don't know that we've had a serious ride-up in your tenure, have we, Robert? A serious ride-up?
No.
Now, that's valid and heard of for a plant that handles what that has. During the heyday, when we had all the dye houses going and all the caustic chemicals and all the stuff, what a lot of people don't understand is to get that to the point of reception, we had a lot of miles to pipe, we had a lot of pump stations, we had a lot of things that had to get that stuff there. When it gets there, it has to be put back in the creek cleaner than the creek water. It takes money to do that, and they've done a great job of doing that. But this is actually the creek run by the plant, and that's where it's monitored. They test daily, several times a day, depending on hot rush. But this plant's got to have some upgrades. Nothing like it was years ago, but it's going to have to have some money. So you're looking at a couple of million dollars will disappear real quick when you start fixing stuff over here at what it costs in today's prices. The police department was built, good Lord, in the 40s by wheelbarrows and hand-holed concrete. They built scaffolds around that building. The theater, we all remember the theater. I remember going to movies there. My son got to see E.T. there when he was two years old. And it was a new movie thing. That's how that goes back. I remember going back and seeing Jerry Lewis as the Have Some Mind Professor, and it was a horror movie to me. I was so young. It was a comedy, but it scared me. The Doe Building was built in 1887. It's one of our oldest standing landmarks. We're fixing to take possession of this year, and it needs some TLC to get it back where it needs to be. The Cullen Iron Building is the heart of our downtown boom days district. We've got the downstairs fixed. It's getting some tremendous use. The upstairs, we want to convert that into teaching art lofts, something that's culturally diverse. You know, teaching studios for all different disciplines. The pool, it's going to have to have some major upgrades. So all these are going to take money. And like I say, the sports complex is set up. We're talking about a finish 1886 deal that was good as it could be in its time, and it's adequate now. But the sport one stays adequate. That's what we've got to ask ourselves. We just want to stay mediocre in some areas, but we were great at one time, and we kind of got by and got to the point where we're adequate. So if we want to get better, we've got to do that. The police department has glass block windows that leak like everything. This is the jail. We have our own jail. A lot of people don't even understand that Fort Payne has its own jail. 911 is in the basement. The detectives are in this area, and the police chief's on the other corner of the building. So this building was built in the 40s. It's got to have some major renovations. We've got to put a new entrance over where the police officers come in and out several times a day. It's been damaged by storms and whatnot. So that building's going to need some TLC. The theater, we all love the theater, but we know this baby right here has got to have some updates. The lights, they work. We're keeping it going. The building looks well for what we're able to do to it. But if we want to make that place a showcase again, it's time to decide how far we want to go. And everything I'm telling you right now is something that we're going to have to price and prioritize. So I'm just giving you the list of things that I'm looking at and we're looking at that we got to address, and then we're going to have to take those on. The Doe Building, the old casket warehouse, it's been called everything time. It was last used as Shire's Hoover. We're going to take this part here off, keep the building in the back, and that will be building maintenance. So this building, we hope to return it back to windows where the holes are blocked up. You can go by there and see it's got some structural buildings. It's got cables that are literally holding it together. That's not something you need to be as nervous about as you think about. It's basically put in there years ago to stabilize things. And depending on how it goes, these were bay doors, and they actually had a fire in there. I've got a picture in one of the landmark books of this actual building on fire. And my father-in-law, who is now 78, rode to that fire with his daddy, who was a fireman, and stood across the street and wants to put the fire out. That building's had several functions over the years, but I think it will be a tremendous asset to us as a historical building to bring back our, we've got so many different military connections in this town. We've got generals that were born and raised here. A lot of people don't understand how many famous people we've got that are from here. And let's showcase them. Cullen Iron Building, like I said, this hole upstairs, we had a kind of a work session, walk-in tour, and people were amazed that it's in as good a shape as it is because it was stabilized. Johnny and his crew stabilized the building, addressed the roof first. Then we got the outside where it's, it's in good shape, outside. But if we're going to finish it upstairs, those are some high ceilings, a lot of wiring, a lot of plumbing, a lot of hard work right up. And we want to do that. The pool. This is, this is our city pool, built on leased property. And then we came back because we didn't have the money to buy it at the time. We leased the property, used some grant money, built the pool, came back in 2002, bought the property, and now it's ours. So this is just three views out. This is looking west, that's looking east, and this is looking right over the corner where you got the little kiddie pub. It's got the big dining board, the short dining board, and then it's got the lanes for competition. The building to the right up there is the pump house, so to speak. So we've got, we've got some issues to address there. Sports complex, like I said, those buildings were built in the 80s. It's time to go out and spend some money on it. We've just got to decide how much we're going to do and when we're going to do it. We definitely want to do it off-season, so we're looking at another winter project. So we can't have Buck and his three guys working seven different places. So we've got to prioritize some of these things and say what we're going to do and when we're going to do it. Sanitation, it's hard to see, and this red outline, that's how much property we have at the landfill. Guys went back a few years ago and bought some more property north there. One issue that we have is we've got some property right here we don't own that we're going to have to own. So we're going to have to buy that in the next few years. But sanitation has got to have some money put back for future expansion, for the footprint expansion, for closing the existing. Road maintenance. Our road commissioner, Johnny and Red, drive the roads every year and get with Tim, and they try to prioritize and fix all the roads we can. But the problem we have is we've got 192 miles of streets in Fort Payne that are ours. That's not counting US 11, which goes all the way through town from one ceiling to the other, and 35. Those are both maintained by the state. They are coming in this year to pave from Way Gap up to Whitehall all the way down to 49th Street. They're going to pave that section. So the big sinkhole, Quail Hall Road, hopefully will get fixed and paved by the state because it's their road. The state is also coming in to Mill and Patch, Galt Avenue, where it's sunk in in so many places like 8th Street South and other places. Those are state roads that have to be maintained by them. But we've got 192 miles ourselves that cost $62,000 a mile to pave. We've got a new machine, and the reason it's 62 is because we've got a new machine, and Tim can take the air factor out of the old machine, and it was $65,000 a mile. Now we can actually do it efficiently and properly in the $62,000. We try to get around five miles a year. We don't put a number on that. We just try to pave everything we can with the money that we have that year. And it averages plus or minus around $300,000. But if we go at the rate we're going, it'll take 38 years to pave every street in Fort Payne one time. So some of them have to be paved every 10 years. Some of them will last 38 years. So you have to, again, prioritize them. So then the next thing, we've got improvements that we need to do. Those are our short-term deals. Here's some of our other stuff. The sewer to northwest Fort Payne, the exit 218 upgrade, I just showed you the picture of. The map code. We talked about purchasing that. We've got a verbal again that they're going to let us buy it, but they haven't told us how much for. So we've got an appraisal coming. We're going to try to purchase the map code. Then we've got a demo. We can clean that lot up and do something with it. So that's going to cost money. The mayor's been working diligently on Old Hospital. We've got to get tested. Those samples are off. When we get those reports back, it's kind of crazy in one sense, but the samples got to come back. They got to say it's bad, and then we've got to take ownership of it to get money to clean it up. But that's in the works. We don't know how much money we'll get. We don't know how much money it will take. We don't know what the use of that building's going to be. So that is one of the things that's in progress right now. The Cobble Building was given to the city at 8th and Galt North. There's been some discussion about turning that into an entrepreneurial center. There's some interest in doing that. Right now, it's shuttered up, and we're having to mow the yard and put it round up on the grass to keep it from looking so bad. So that's going to have to be addressed. The landfill is going to have to be addressed. That's a buying problem. The sports complex. My thinking, and I'll show you some pictures in a second on that. We've had the same three soccer fields there since the 80s. We've got over 750 kids playing in the soccer program. We've got little league ball games. We've got big ball games. We've got softball games. We've got everybody competing for parking space and playing space up there. So if we can come up with a way that we can build a new standalone soccer complex, I'll show you in a second where that could be. Those three soccer fields could then be turned into three more baseball fields and a miracle field, and I'll show you the picture of. So that's baseball and softball improvements. All of that can be done with a three-phase, three-pronged attack. We want to increase pavement, and we do not want to say, hey, we're going to pave 10 miles a year. We're going to pave 12. We can't say that because some roads take more work than others. You may have to rework one before you pave it. So we may have a year where we do eight miles, but it's eight really critical miles. We may have a year we could do 15. We don't know, but we know we've got to increase pavement. If we're going to spend $100,000 or $200,000 on those swimming pools, why don't we look at the possibility of building an aquatic center that would bring in some revenue and bring people in here? And we'll show you some of that stuff. Right now, we don't have basketball. We've got four tennis courts in there at the high school. We've got some in Terrapin Hills, but there's quite a bit of use on those. The Military Museum, again, the Doe Building, turn that into what it needs to be. And then we've got a prop deal here by Jefferson's that was given to the city that we have to fill and bring it up above flood level so that it can be developed and turned into commercial property. That's estimated at $100,000, just to get it where it's marketable. We want to get a green space. Everybody wants to talk about, hey, we need something to do. If we have a green space, which is basically a biking, hiking, walking trail, Will's Creek would be the ideal place to do that. The miracle field is basically a handicapped accessible ball field. It's set up in the configuration of a tee-ball field because it can be used for tee-ball. It's basically a concrete field with a rubberized painted finish that people in wheelchairs, walkers, crutches, anybody that has to walk on totally level ground with no trip hazards can play ball on that. They have leagues forming up. We can look at that, and it can also be used for tee-ball. So it's not just a once-in-a-lifetime deal. You can use it however many times a year you need for whatever you need to use it for. We clean up Will's Creek, and I say water plant, water plant is canoe, a kayak, a raft, or like us good old boys used to talk about, a truck entity. But if you can get things for people to do that are entertaining and not destructive, get them to come here and do something. There are a lot of people in Chattanooga and Hustle that like to go to the mountains. We just branded Fort Payne as Alabama's mountain town. Give them something to do when they get here. Mountain bike trails. We have enough property at the landfill right now. We actually own from Glenwood Cemetery all the way to the interstate and then north up that ridge. We can put mountain bike trails and hiking trails in property that the city already owns. We don't have to go to the side of the mountain or up the mountain. We can do that later if we need to expand that. But I think we can get enough easements that we could actually at some point in time go all the way from Glenwood Cemetery to Diamond Hill Sheraton in those ridges, bypassing the shooting range where nobody gets knocked off their bicycle. But there are logging roads in there already that could be converted fairly easily into trails. You don't have to build a road there. They just need to have something they can ride. I'm not talking about racing bikes. I'm talking about mountain bikes where you ride trails and you walk and you hike and you backpack. Our pre-cad program, the Child Resource Network, the kids at the Child Development Center deserve better than they're having to be housed in. That's the best we've got right now, but that's the old, old hospital. And if we can expand things and get things where space opens up, we can move those kids out of the old Child Development Center into the newer facility and improve and enhance that program so that gives our children additional benefits. Right now, we have Senior Bingo, one miss you a month. We can expand our programs for senior citizens where we can go weekly. We can have bridge tournaments, whatever. We want to poll the senior citizens, see what they would like to do, and give them an activity where they come and meet, and we feed them lunch, and they go to the house, and they've met people, they've got out, they've exercised, they've used their mind. Play Scrabble requires some brain work. Anything that you can do to stimulate physical and mental activity is beneficial to senior citizens. And we can do that, plus lunch, and it won't cost us that much money. We can put a price tag on it, but I guarantee you we can do it. And we can expand and enhance our schools, which opens up some avenues for some of these other projects. The sewer to Fort Payne on the northwest side, here's where it goes to. Here's where it comes from. This is the sewer plant, way down here at the bottom. This is Fort Payne, running north to south. This is the old earth drains, the sports complex, the school facilities all up there. There is no sewer. There is no sewer other than what you see in blue lines. This blue line goes over to the old DeSoto Hosiery, comes down to Dead Man's Curve, and then goes down this blue line, and you've got pump stations. You've got a pump station up here where all the sewer here has to be pumped up here, comes down here out, comes over to the airport to another pump station where it's pumped again. These are called forced mains, which mean they have sewer under pressure. You just can't go out there and tie into that and put a pipe in it, can you, Rob? That makes a terrible mess. Those pipes were literally so worn out years ago during the heyday of the sock business that some of them are paper-thin. The reason they're still working is 'cause the load is down on them. So in two thousand and two, Johnny and his crew did a study and had this plan developed. These are all gravity sewer lines, which is the way you wanna go. You want it to go downhill with just the flow of water and not have it pumped. It was done in four phases. The first one was down here from the sail barn to the plant. The next one was from the sail barn up to the airport. The next one was from the airport up to Dead Man's Curve. And these all ran Will's Creek, because if water run downhill, other stuff will too. So you make it a gravity system, take these pump stations out of the mix, save a bunch of money annually on that process. So all of these were done, and these were priced. This phase is totally new. This is from Dead Man's Curve up Will's Creek out to the new Forty-Ninth Street to the pump station at Earthcranes. If you put this in, that's an all-gravity line. It would accommodate Terrapin Hills Lagoon, take it out of a deal where it's basically having to treat the affluent at Terrapin Hills, one hundred and sixty-seven and thereabout households, and then it goes back into the creek. There's some issues there. That's a private system, but that's the best they got. You put this gravity system in, you open up this whole part of Fort Payne to development, residential, commercial, whatever. There is no sewer there. I thought, I hope everybody understands. There's no sewer anywhere in here. It's just Terrapin Hills down to the game. So you put that in, and these have been priced out. To get the most bang for the buck is to run sewer where there is none. So that project in itself, it's six point eight million dollars. So if you do a ten million dollar bond issue, you put this sewer up here, and that gives you well over two million dollars, well over three, depending on what it works out, to go to the sewer plant for upgrades. So that's all done in one fell swoop. We've got a bond payment right now of seven hundred fifty-eight, they're about a thousand dollars a year. It pays out next year. If you get ten million dollars of sewer bond money, it's paid for out of sewer fund, not the general fund. That payment would drop to five hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we would cut two hundred thousand dollars off the burden of the sewer fund to pay that bond. Fix a lot of stuff, cut some costs down. So there's ten million dollars you need, but it's gonna cost you half a million dollars that we don't have right now. In one more year, we're gonna pay that bond off. We can set this up where the next year, that payment comes to you. So we do all this sewer work right here and basically save two hundred thousand dollars a year after next year. So that's one option. Two eighteen, like I said, five million dollar project. They ain't gonna do it if we don't give them some money. We're not trying to negotiate, but they want a million dollars. Johnny offered seven fifty, but they have firm on the million dollars. So we're gonna do that. That is gonna be so beneficial to Fort Payne, you won't imagine the, the effect when it's overdone. The map code, we've gotta buy it, and we gotta get rid of it. That's gonna cost money. We've gotta assign a value to that. The Old Hospital, that's gonna cost money. We don't know how much on us, how much on federal government. We just don't know. That's an unknown entity, but we've gotta be in a position to do that when the time comes. So that's gotta be a systematic. The Cobble Building. If we put that into private ownership, that's off our books and we're good. But we just wanna make sure it goes into private ownership, and the shutters come off, and it goes back in to be a viable building again. We don't wanna stay shuttered up on Galt Avenue, three blocks north of our historic neighborhood. That's still our historic district as far as I'm concerned. The landfill. We've gotta buy this piece of property and this piece of property. We don't know what that's gonna cost. We'll leave that up to our attorney. Uh, we've tried to buy it several years. It just was not for sale. But we've got to have that to move these holding ponds over here, up here, because our runoff will go north instead of south, so we've gotta have it. We own all this property here. We may be able to get some options and some easements on some of this. So we've got the property to expand our landfill now, other than these two pieces of property. So that's a value we're gonna have to assign. The sports complex. Currently as it sits, here's the old Earthcranes. Here's our three little ball fields, our park area, a big softball, and these three soccer fields. That's our soccer, that's our soccer, baseball, tee-ball, softball complex. It would be, that's our multi-purpose complex as it stands today. This is it in a wider picture, but if you'll see, we have owned this property right here. And it's kinda funny. We built this on leased property. Then we had to go buy this property, give it to Earthcranes for the deed to this property. Then we got it back. So now we own this and this. We did own this, and we just got paid off for it this year. So that's the money that's been coming in. It's not gonna come in anymore. So we own this nice hay field, sorry, Buck, but we own this nice hay field right here. This is a wetland, which can't be built in or disturbed. This is a spring up here that comes down from here that can be routed down this way. This would be a tremendous soccer complex. It's still in driving distance and walking distance of the old soccer complex. But if you can get these three fields here, how many can you get in here? We maybe possibly, uh, put a full-size high school competition size field in. We don't know. You make this a soccer complex, expand that ability for kids to do things there. Pee-wee football, we have a hundred and fifty kids, boys and girls. We got a lot of cheerleaders that thank you much for pee-wee footballs, the boys do. They don't even have a bathroom to go to when they practice now. They have to go to the high school concession stand on the map code and use the restroom when they practice. So we, we wanna address that. So, you know, there's, there are nearly a thousand kids just between soccer and pee-wee football that could benefit from this property being turned into a full-fledged pee-wee football soccer complex. Once that's completed, these turn into three or four more fields, depending on what you si- what size you put on and how big you make them, and how you wanna go with that. So if you're gonna expand something, here's a bigger picture of that property. This property could possibly be acquired from Old Stratton's parent company, which would square that off. But this whole piece of property, that's roughly fifteen hundred to five hundred feet of usable space, not counting the slopes and the spring and whatnot. So that would be right across the street from what's projected as the new elementary school. They'd go hand in hand. If there's construction down over here and they have excess material that they need to remove, it'd be nicely removed right across the street, working hand in hand, partnering with our other entities. Increased paving, that's about all you can say. We need to increase paving. The Aquatic Center. We've got a nice field that was, uh, developed just north of the rec center. It's got four backstops, primarily used for practice for soccer and stuff now. You build a nice aquatic center there, and I'm talking about an aquatic center. A new outdoor pool, a full-fledged water park, not a splash pad, but a water park. And these, if you wanna go on the internet and Google up Coleman, this is theirs. They have since added another big slide over here. That brings in a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. It gives people a lot of things. It takes everything from little kids to adults. And here's my thinking. If kids will drive from Adairville, Georgia, that get killed out here in the canyon doing risky stuff, let them come down here and slide one of these sixty-foot slides for a few dollars and eat a hamburger down before they leave. It's safer for them, and it takes work off of rescue people. People will come to this. Coleman's is right up the road from Spring Valley Beach in Blountsville. It's rated as the number-two water park in Alabama, and it's within thirty minutes of Coleman's, and it still brings in there the two hundred dollar a year. This is not a splash pad. This is a water park. This is a big bucket that comes down and dumps on a thing, and it craves water everywhere. So nobody gets knocked down by the force of nature. So even little kids can play in here. It's got playground equipment in the water. It's got a little lasagna river. This is another one. I'm just showing some examples here of the slide configurations that you can get. Some of these are in very rural areas on just basically what was the city pool, and they bought a slide and put on it. So if you're gonna build an aquatic center, build you an aquatic center. That would have to be priced and prioritized. Our basketball and tennis complex. We don't have one. We don't have an outdoor basketball venue right now. We have very few indoor basketball venues other than the rec center. The school kids play and the school gyms and whatnot. This is our four tennis courts that we have, and they're all at the high school. And I went and looked down them the other day. They're in pretty good shape, but they need some improvement, but they need some more tennis courts. So if you're gonna build something, if you're gonna build an aquatic center up at Will's Valley, then take the old pool, turn that into your basketball tennis complex, maybe. We own all the property. We can do some configuring over there. It's off the main track. It's in the center of town. So you've got basketball potential. You've got restaurants, concessions down there if you wanted to do something. So that's already in place. Make that some tennis courts and basketball facilities there. Our Military Museum. We did this for the mayor 'cause he wants to put a tank at Patriot Park. Our Military Museum would be the dough building. We can get that in there. It'd be across the street. But if you've got Patriots Park, it's basically designed to honor every patriot, which is military, fire, police, EMS, everybody that's considered a patriot. What would be better than to go right across the street in our eighteen eighty-seven inch Military Museum that's got stuff from Revolutionary War, Civil War, anything that anybody hears you gotta type to. People can literally bring you things to put in that museum, and you receive it in, much like the depot does. And you can have grandpa's uniform from World War One on display properly in a climate-controlled building. Jefferson's property. This is Jefferson's right here. We have this whole piece of property right here, but this is a creek, so it's gotta be brought up to the level where you can develop that. That's roughly a hundred thousand dollars, just to get it where you can build on it. Green space. That's how simple it can be. Something that people can ride a bike on, walk on, push a baby carriage on, jog. No motorized vehicles, no dirt bikes, no four-wheelers, none of that. They can go ride somewhere else. We're talking about passive, easygoing, laid-back recreation. Will's Creek would be the ideal place to do that. The Miracle Field that I talked about. This is an overhead shot of one. Huntsville just built one. There's several in Alabama. But this is basically just a concrete, rubberized, painted finish tee-ball field that has no trip hazards. Can you imagine that in Fort Payne? And right out here outside the outfield fence was a totally handicapped, accessible playground, which means all kids can use it. We have some playground equipment in the city park, thanks to Game Time in the city, and some clubs partnered up. But we've just got a few pieces there. If you built that whole thing handicapped, accessible, kids small, they don't know what's handicapped. They just know they can play on it. If handicapped kids can play on it, any kid can play on it. So that's.
And seniors.
Yeah, yeah. Senior citizens could actually walk up instead of having to go upstairs. But this is something that's, that's near to my heart. The Miracle League is formed up, and they actually have leagues where people, and this is not just children. This is adults. We all know adults who are handicapped, who are challenged, that need something to do to get out. And you, you go back to CBS News last week, again, San Antonio built a whole water park for handicapped kids because his daughter could not speak. I don't know if she has some form of autism or what, but she went to a birthday party at a, at a swimming pool, and the kids had nothing to do with it, and he said that the look in her eye broke his heart. That she, she was like, what's wrong with me? She couldn't tell him that, but it broke his heart. And he built an eighteen million dollar water park for handicapped people. And to see those kids riding around in wheelchairs and the splash pads and stuff like that, it, it'll warm your heart. But if you'll take care of the least of these, I'll take care of you. Will's Creek. That's how much through our valley, Will's Creek encompasses. It, it runs from north to south, folks. We all know it comes through here, but a lot of people don't know how many zigs and zags it makes. It's perfect for canoeing and kayaking, but you can't get through it in some places because of the debris and things like that. Two things here. If you clean it out, it gets the waters out of the valley quicker, makes it safer, cuts our flooding down. You also make it an navigable waterway so people can canoe, they can raft, they can kayak, whatever. And this, if you wanna look at a close-up of this, I've got some. But that's how much that creek affects our, our community here. If we go to the prospect of doing this gravity sewer line, you get the easements along the sewer to do the sewer line. You put your green space, walking trail on the same property. Once the sewer line's buried and covered up, you basically put an eight-foot wide road down through there so that people can inspect the sewer line and see what's going on. And you close off the entrances where people can only get on it with bicycles or things like that, and you've got your green space. Mountain bike trails. Doesn't seem to be a big priority for a lot of people, but for the people that it's a priority to, it's one of the biggest ones I have. It doesn't have to be a mountain bike trail. It just needs to be a trail that's suitable for mountain bikes. And if you ride a bicycle on it, you can hike on it. And we've got as much elevation in this ridge complex up here as the side of the mountain. Some of these ridges are steeper than the side of the mountain. So we own that property. We can work out property owners, hopefully give us easements to take that further north if we needed to. You can actually go to the cemetery and go over the ridge and get into this biking, hiking complex. This is in a little better context. This is the FOP shooting range right here, so you say we go there. But if you stay up here and skirt the top of the ridge, you could eventually come out at Donovan Sherway. And there will still be you. Like I say, the Child Development Center is in the old, old high school. We need to do better than that. Our seniors, this is just a canned photograph, but our seniors meet one Wednesday a month, play bingo, and have lunch, have a good time. Lot of front-covered dishes. If you do that once a month, we can expand that to once a week. Every Wednesday could be Senior Day. Then they go to the store and get your sales. Our schools, this is our newest school. It's twenty years old. Mr. Cunningham can address any issues that we have about that. It was built in conjunction with the city. The city partnered with the schools in nineteen ninety-seven. We built the rec center. They built schools. They touch. They physically join. That's the gym for the school, but we're paying for it. Nothing wrong with that. We've been paying for it for twenty years. It's been a good arrangement. So we can help do things like that. We've done it in the past. We'll do it again. This is my propaganda stuff. We're in a position to move to the next level for our community, and ours is all of us. We heard all these ideas are requests last year. We can improve Fort Payne. That's what we promised we'd do, and it's time to do that. But to go forward, we've gotta have more revenue that's coming in now. That's the bottom line. The last sales tax increase was nineteen eighty-four. A one penny sales tax increase at Fort Payne right now will bring us to everybody else around us, and will generate approximately two point eight million dollars at current levels. That funding can be allocated as we see fit as a body to do any or all of these projects and anything else we need to do. We just don't have it to do right now. This is a long-range plan, but it would have short-term results. You would see immediate results within a year on some of these plans. Our complex was built in eighty-six. The pool was built about the same time. Then we had to go back and buy them in two thousand, two thousand and two. Our new rec center, twenty years old, our new rec center. Our major capital approvals over the last thirty years have all been funded by bonds. That's the way to go. That's the best way to go. Best use of money. We do all these projects in that same way with bond money, but we have to have money to make the bond payments. Our infrastructure needs upgrading. We need more money for commercial development. We need more money to be competitive as an industrial recruiter. We have two hundred and twelve thousand dollars in our industrial development fund to go out and try to hook somebody. That's not gonna do much at this day and time. In nineteen sixty-seven, our parents and grandparents made a bold decision, and they got a property tax to fund the school system at Fort Payne. Thirty years later, they came back and overwhelmingly kept it in place, and it's what's funding our school system today. They did seven eighth mill property tax. We're just only talking about a penny right now. And by the way, a mill, a property tax, to show you the diversity in communities. A mill in Fort Payne, the last data I had was a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and Coleman is two hundred and eight. That's the difference in communities. So if you wanna know why some communities have more money than others, it's because of disparities like that. If you can improve the quality of life for everyone in this creek, build things that will make people wanna come to this community, improve safety, health, and education, and give your community the great majority of things that they long for, then why wouldn't you? You can do all this by raising the tax just to the level of the people around us. We're not going ahead of anybody. We're just catching up. Talladega's at five cents. We're talking about going to Fort. Ozark is at four. Ozark is at full. Alexander City's full. Coleman is a half a cent city sales tax, but guess what? The county collects three and a half cents for them and they get seventeen million dollars in revenue now. So everything's got an asterisk. You gotta dig to find out the backstory. Scottsboro has three cents. Jackson County collects two cents and gives a third of that money to the Scottsboro school board and in turn gives one point four million dollars to the Scottsboro city to pay the bonds that they floated to pay for the school. Harthsells is at full. Gerald Gardenville is full. Saraland's four and a half, Uvallo's full. Tallahassee's at five. And then you see the little asterisk down here. We're talking about going to full. That would take us to nine cents, which is where Rancho's been for years. I'm not talking about leapfrogging anybody. I'm talking about catching up and moving our city forward. And we've gotta make that decision as a group of how far we wanna go. So we can prove Fort Payne. This will allow us to do all of these projects. We can prioritize those and do the ones we need to do as soon as we need to do them. But it also allows us to partner with the school system where they need to do some major renovation. Their money's tied up till two thousand twenty six on the bond issue. They can't get any more money right now on property tax without voting for a new property tax. The climate's not there for that. Nobody around us has approved that lately. People just don't wanna improve the quality of life by having to pay another thirty dollars a year property tax. It's just not gonna happen in most communities. But this penny's not gonna hurt anybody. And I've heard the arguments of, okay, you're gonna pay sales tax for all the money schools. No, I just went through an hour of city projects that need to be funded and done if we're gonna move to the next level in our community. When we get to the point of discussing things with schools, Mr. Cunningham and his group have a program and they have a proposal for us on how they wanna address certain things. If they're gonna do anything to improve, we're gonna have to fund that. We're gonna have to fund that some way and it can be part of the sales tax. And I say a part. You can't commit money you don't have yet and you can't commit all of this right now and hope that it stays good. You have to be very conservative of this, but we've got some plans in place where we can do spot things. We can do five million dollar increments of bonds if we need to. We don't have to go borrow fifty million dollars, which this penny would fund. I'm not talking about borrowing fifty million dollars in bond money and pay for it with this two point eight million dollars that a penny will fund. That gives us nothing to keep the city going forward or raises. Like I said, the city paid us about a half million dollars there two weeks. Those people want a raise every now and then. They deserve a raise every now and then. We can't commit so much of this money to other things that we can't take care of our citizens and our employees. This will take care of everybody. We just have to decide as a group how we're gonna prioritize that and what we're gonna do and what way we're gonna go. So we all talked about let's move Fort Payne forward last year. It's time to move Fort Payne forward. Anybody wanna jump in there?
I just wondered if anyone else had questions or anything come before we move forward. I do have someone here that I just kinda like to speak to some things, but I think that you guys should be given the floor first.
Do you want to address some of the stuff I talked about? I just briefly alluded to the schools having a plan. Their plan is basically a multi-step approach. And they're gonna prioritize what they think they need to do to come to us, put that plan forward. Because we have to partner with them or this doesn't happen. We decide whether to go forward or not. If we don't do this, nothing's gonna fall. We're just gonna stay where we are. So I'm not for passing a sales tax to build a new school. I'm for passing a penny sales tax to catch up nearby around us, do the things that our people deserve and help schools. Fair enough.
Would you like to?
Sure. You wanna come up here, you can, I tender the microphone to Jeff Cunningham.
Oh, I will.
The meanest hundred and sixty pound guard I ever had to be with.
I thought you said one sometimes all hurt.
Great job.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me. Counsel, mayor, mayor, I'd have you a happy year.
I thought I'd been promoted. Well, if you got that, I'll just come upside down. How about that?
We do have a few things we'd like to mention. First, thanks for having us and thanks for all you do for us. We have, as you know, four student buildings. And Mr. Hill mentioned that our facilities are aging. I just wanna make you aware of the age of the schools too, because there's a shelf life on those buildings. Will's Valley Elementary School is our new school. We're proud of it. It's a nineteen ninety eight new school and we're in twenty seventeen. Now, our job is not to just keep the building and keep schools, we want to keep building up. And we try to do the best we can. If you walk through it, we carry people through that thing still today and they say, why does this look like a new building? We wanna take care of it. We also appreciate the, you partnering with us, allowing us to use the rec center for physical education, also basketball practice. That's a great partnership and forward thinking for that to happen. It's wonderful for the city of Fort Payne and for the students of Fort Payne. Fort Payne Middle School, we don't think of that as an old building, but it's a nineteen eighty eight model. Twenty nine years old. Williams Avenue Elementary School. Now, I wanna date some people. How many of you attended Williams Avenue? About everybody in here. And there's a good chance most of your parents also attended Williams Avenue. And it was built in nineteen fifty four. Now, that's the older part of the building, which is sixty three years old. Now, we've had additions to it. In sixty nine, we have a library. In seventy six, we put in the old junior high addition. In ninety five, we put the additions at the north end of the building, but still the main building's sixty three years old. We've worked hard to keep that thing up. But that, those sixty three years has had a lot of traffic. So it's not the most attractive facility we have by any means. Something we need to address. Me and Fort Payne High School, we used to call it the New High School. Do you remember that? Well, the New High School is a sixty nine model, so it's forty eight years old. And I will date myself. I was in the first freshman class to go for a full year at Fort Payne High School. So it's been around for a while, but we keep that thing up too. But here's our problem. Right now, Will's Valley, we have pre-K and you know we have five of those now. And we go all the way through second grade. We have seven hundred and eighty six students there. At Williams Avenue is just third and fourth grade. We have five hundred and nine students. Fort Payne Middle School's fifth through eighth grade, nine hundred and eighty seven students. This year, we're gonna go over a thousand. At Fort Payne High School, this past year, we had nine hundred and twenty three and the number looks closer to nine fifty this time. Last year, our total enrollment was thirty two hundred and five students. Now, that's not a huge school system, but for a city system, we're a six A school system. It's a lot of students. I'm telling you that to tell you, we've got one really old school. Actually, two really old schools, but one tremendously old. And we have students in every classroom in every building. Our graduation rate, I just wanna give you some things, some points of pride. You hear graduation rate all the time. Are we getting kids through school? If they're getting a proper education, in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, it's ninety one percent. But for the, from twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen, it's been ninety seven percent or greater graduating. We're proud of that. College and career ready standards, which are kids that are past the work keys or they've met the ACT benchmarks, or they have industrial certifications or college credit or enlisted into a branch of military. This past year, we were at ninety one percent, which is outstanding. It's ninety one point two percent. Industry credentials, we've gone up the past two years. We had eighty eight students receive industry credentials, which is workforce development. Fort Payne High School, total scholarships. Do you come to the scholarship presentations? But you'd be amazed to see this. In twenty twelve, we had seventy three students received a little over two million dollars in scholarships. Last year, this past year, we had ninety two seniors out of two hundred and six received five million, two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars in scholarships. So we've really gone up trying to do a better job. And our folks do a fantastic job. Technology advancements, you got a big part of it. In two thousand eight, you did. Promethian boards, we're putting in every classroom, unheard of. We're one of the few in the nation. In fact, some say we were the first. There's a dispute over whether we were the first, second or third, but that's fantastic. We put classroom sound systems in every classroom. We put document cameras in all our classrooms. In twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, we provided iPads for all students at Fort Payne High School. We felt we arrived. The next year, we gave all the middle school iPads. So now we're half all kids in the school system have iPads. In twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, all the students that we examined here got an iPad. And in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we took the iPads from the high school and moved them to pre-K through two. Even a pre-K student, everyone of them has their own iPad. And all the high school students got a Chromebook. So as far as technology and technology in the classroom, there's nobody better than us. We have internet access throughout, high speed internet access, wireless access throughout all our students. We've put in career tech education, agriculture, food and natural resources, architecture and construction, arts and AV technology, business management administration. And I'm sorry, Jessica, I'm not telling you to go through this. I'm just, you know, I'm just going as fast as I can, okay? Education and training, government, public administration, health science, hospitality and tourism, law and public safety and corrections and security, project lead the way in engineering. All this sounds just like the day you were in high school a little bit. You had all those opportunities, didn't you, Amy? Don't you remember when you were in the engineering class, project lead the way? No, none of this was available.
I hate to say Amy doesn't remember any of it.
This has happened in very recent years and we're proud of it. And I know you're proud of it because it's your student system. We've been able to have academic initiatives and Jessica, if you'll back up. Back, back, keep going back. I want to see this. Again, we're one to one iPads. We're fully digital classrooms. We compete in best robotics. We have the state champion for the past five years in the real world design team that has represented us in Washington three years. We have, we have rocketry competition teams, both at the Millan High School. We have Rude Goldberg competition teams and that's physics teams. And this was our first year of being that and we won the state. We went on to the international competition in that. We have dual enrollment courses. You can't imagine how much, how many college courses you can leave Fort Payne High School with our partnership with Northeast and JSU. So we're really proud of what we can offer our students. We have Lego robotics teams that compete everywhere. In fact, we were just in another international competition in Arkansas this summer with the middle school robotics team. We have culinary competitive teams. We have our own TV station. I know on TV production and those guys competed again, national competition this time in Kentucky. We have health science competitive teams. We competed in international competition again in Florida this time. We have tech teams at Williams Avenue, Fort Payne Middle School and Fort Payne High School. We have drama teams. The list just goes on and on. And I'm not talking about the thing, I'm talking about things that are over and above what you usually see. Or if we have every kind of sport you can imagine except ice hockey away from, I won't mention that. We don't wanna go to ice hockey. But in saying that, we have needs. And gentlemen, you have something and it's option one. And Jessica, I don't know if this is working for you, if you can find option one on there or not. But option one talks about a new elementary school. If you're aware, we just bought approximately fifty five acres across from the old Miracle Building.
Has that property been purchased?
Yes.
It is. Y'all have the date, don't you?
The date's on my desk. It's school or property. We're looking for seven hundred and fifty students or so to go to a new school there if we decide to move Williams Avenue. We'd like to change Williams as a grade three through four student now. We'd like to go three through five. This would take the fifth grade away from the middle school, move it to the new school. This would free up Williams Avenue to still be used. And again, it could be used for pre-K. It can help with those child development children that you're talking about. Any dual enrollment possibilities we might bring from colleges. It opens up all kinds of things that could happen at Williams Avenue. But with this new elementary school, it would house seven hundred and fifty students, have forty classrooms, grades three through five, a PEGM cafeteria, media center, administration. This is the scary part. Now, when you get to schools, you talk about big buildings. The projection from the architects is that's around an eighteen million dollar school. I don't give schools away, but we need, we need a new school, we need to rent it. We would also propose that we have a new high school competition, gym on the high school that would seat sixteen hundred in an arena style seating in the, in the, in the round, which means we have seats all around the floor. We'd have walker rooms, related spaces, parking and driving. That budget to do that, and that was really in the original plan, it was an auditorium, but this would be even more than auditorium, is around six and a half million dollars. But that would sit by the parking lot, adjacent to the high school office and in front of the gym, which means we would have to move our parking down to where the band practice field is and where the tennis courts is. So it helps us to hear that we would have tennis court possibilities at another area. Those parkings will be friendly. I did put on there a cost for tennis courts, new construction of a tech building. We really think, as we look at what we could do, I continue to hear we'd have a shortage of future plumbers, electricians, machinists, welders. We'd like to have a building that would house that type of instruction. We're looking at drywall, construction, the whole nine yards of building a house or helping with contractors, finding people that could work for them. And we have students that are willing and capable of learning that that trade, we should have a place for it. So it would be great to have that doing. And that projected costs around seven hundred thousand and we could open that up at night if the city wanted to have a program for citizens at night. People would be glad to have training going on for the same thing there. New park, parking and driveway, in other words, our driveways are bad. Utes and the streets are bad. Let me look at our driveways. Our parking lots are terrible and it's very expensive to fix them and we're gonna need more. That is a big dollar, big ticket price as you see. But we need more parking at Will's Valley. We need parking at the middle school and we need parking at the high school. And Kim, this is gonna, this sounds like a bunch, but you know how it really, parking, paving needs to be money. It's around two million dollar projection. And then our press box at the stadium, we put that in for a reason. We have a beautiful stadium. It's probably in the prettiest setting you can imagine for a Friday night event or a graduation. But if you go to our press box, you're gonna see restrooms that'll house around one person at a time. One, well, actually two, one in the, one female, one male. And that's really not enough. We need to make that more presentable for our city of Fort Payne and for our visitors. And this is actually on our home side. We just, we need to renovate our press box. If we did that and looking at the monies we were talking about, you're, you're close to thirty two, thirty five million dollars. Would it make a huge difference? Yes. I was also asked, would it not be better if we didn't just build a high school on the new land? Move everybody at the middle school to the high school? Move everybody from Williams Avenue to the, to Fort Payne Middle School? And have an expansion for all areas? Yeah. Now, that is, that would be fantastic. So I got a price tag on that, fifty three million. Now, you were talking about money though, and the penny does add up to a lot of money if it's leveraged. I feel like to do everything Wade would like to do and also earn I feel like to do everything Wade would like to do and also what you would like to do, and looking at our needs, probably the option one would be what we'd have to look at, look at the school part of it first. But on the high school, we have to keep in mind in 2026, when the property tax comes up for renewal, we need to be prepared at that time to support the renewal because we know our high school's a 1969 model. And I think we probably need to look at what Albert was done and the places that have built a high school on the footprint they already have. And that takes a little more time, but we have a perfect location for a high school now where it is. So that's just some thoughts I wanted to share with you. Also in your package, you have a few diagrams of what we'd like to do. Is there any questions on the needs of our city school system? Well, thank you for listening. And I'm really excited. These are true needs. We want to offer our students the best we can, the best education possible in a safe facility, and this would help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Does anybody else from the audience, anybody else like to address the council? Any concerns? Jimmy?
I'd just like to say, I've been at Fort Payne a long time, but this is one of the closest we've had to a strategic plan for the city of Fort Payne that I know of. And I think Wade's done an outstanding job on this and with y'all's input. I do think this is a footprint that we can follow, you know, to make Fort Payne a greater city. And I just think y'all did a great job, and hopefully the citizens of Fort Payne will support y'all 100%.
Well, we hope so. What I wanted to get in this meeting was let's put everything out here on the table. If we're going to talk about something, I did not want anybody to come back later on and say, oh, this is a ruse to get some money to fix the city streets and pave some roads, and down the road a month, y'all come in here and ask for some money. I don't want anybody to think for one minute that we're trying to hide anything. I think anybody knows us, knows we're as transparent as anybody that's ever been here. We're not wax paper, we're Saran Wrap. We want everybody to understand what's out there and what's on the table. We understand that the city has partnered with the schools before. I think we want to partner with the schools in the future. But knowing what you need and a relative price tag gives us the ability to prowl our toes of things, and it may be a little here and a little there, but we know where we're going forward, and we know about what timeframe we can do certain things. So I just wanted to address one thing and leave you with this. When you talk about a one penny sales tax, you're talking about a dollar a hundred. It's not going to kill anybody. The two most affected groups of people are your senior citizens on fixed income and your low-income multi-household families. So here's just a couple examples. Senior citizens, I'll take that first because they're near my heart. If you have a person on social security and they're drawing $800 a month, and they spend their whole check at Bruce's Food Land, they're going to spend eight more dollars. But they're not going to spend that whole check, they're going to have some other things. But just their whole check would be eight more dollars going to that tax. For they, we could offer them a Wednesday lunch, every Wednesday, if they want. If they can't come and take advantage of that, the council on age and serves lunch every day eleven, five days a week, anybody will come and get it. If you can't come and get it, they'll ring a team, meals on wheels, and a lot of you people in here are in clubs that go deliver those. Only twenty to twenty-five people a day take advantage of that program. If you're on fixed income in Fort Payne, if you have social security or disability, you can get free garbage pickup. That will save you $15 a month right there. That's twice what you would pay in that tax increase. If you're on sewer, you can save up to $14.96 on that, that's $30 a month. You can make $22 a month on this deal if you'll just support us in it, if you're in the right configuration. And everybody wins. The low-income households, we hear about the kids, oh, my Lord, we got all these people that are on reduced and free lunches. That's a program we have no control of. People fill out those applications, and they get those mails, and there's nothing we can do about it. But I think last year's number sixty-two percent, I think, is what had a reduced or free lunch. You can qualify for a reduced lunch at $45,000 of your household income. Just because you qualify, it don't mean you need to take advantage of it, but a lot of people do. One demographic in that sixty-two percent, half of it to be exact, is 98% free or reduced. So you take that out of the mix, and we're around 37%. So it's not a crisis of kids going hungry around here, and it's not a crisis of our senior citizens going to do without. We can address anybody's needs when this program gets in place. We've just got to figure out if we're going to do this, when we're going to do it, and how we want to prioritize things when it gets to that point. So we've got a council meeting next week, and I would like Brian to be able to put on the agenda for us to at least have an ordinance to look at and make a decision that we're going to go forward, and we can decide at that time that we're going to address this issue or we're going to just back it off and stay where we're at. So I think it's time to put up a show. People tell me to go fix things, I'm here to try to fix things. We all said we'd lift Fort Payne forward. We're doing okay, but we deserve better, and we can do better.
Okay. Could you clarify real quickly and tell us how, what percent sales tax that Fort Payne receives from the county?
We get none.
Exactly. Right.
They get one cent, we get none of that. That's about $5 million a year. It goes, most of it out, nearly three of that goes out of Fort Payne and none comes back. Now, I'm not going to bait up on the county commissions. Some of them are friends, one of them's running. But they get a penny, they got the ability to take another penny. If we don't take a penny, we didn't take a penny. When they do it now, when they put it to work, we can come back anytime in the future and prioritize every one of these things. We can do some city stuff if the school needs this over here. I'm not saying let's go give $30 million to the schools. I'm not for that. I'm for list fund the schools as best we can and do what we need to do to make them better, which makes us better.
Okay. So, sorry to cut you off, but I just want to talk a little bit.
Go ahead.
I mean, honestly, I respect Jimmy Cunningham. We've been friends forever, and if he says we need a new school, I mean, I believe you. And I look at these figures and I look back at just the scholarship totals you're telling me in the last five years. That's almost $20,000 that our school has generated that the parents in Fort Payne have not had to pay. That's investment back into our community. And that within itself would almost pay for a school in the last five years. So I commend you on that. The thing is, along with that, you said you have just over 3,000 students. You know, we represent plus 15,000 citizens. And so for us to have a sales tax increase and do the things we want to do, I think we should have a strategic plan and commit to that and break these things down into doable steps and plan it and plan it wisely and have everyone on the same page. I met a gentleman through Main Street. His name is Tony Renta. He does those sorts of things, but he's already invested time with Fort Payne over the last three years and done some visioning as far as downtown, but also overall with Fort Payne. And I would just like for him to come up real quickly, if you could, Tony, and just speak to the importance of having this strategic plan. He is an expert in urban development, and he also can work with us and tell us what grant monies are out there and how we can apply them and how we can best do this, not only with the money we have, but the grant opportunities that are out there. And I think that's so important as we move forward. We can't discount that. We need someone telling us how we can do, put all these pieces together and do it in the best informative way. And so hit it, Tony.
I'm Tony Rento at Renta Urban Plan Design of Birmingham. The plan was wonderful. I mean, you identified all the needs, who needs it, why they need it, ways to come about funding. What we did, and actually, you talked about a lot of our projects up there about knowing that, we worked with the city of Coleman to do the same thing. We've worked with their parking rec for about five years. We worked with their city, and then recently this past year, we've been hired by the city to give their strategic plan, where we met with the school board as one group, the chamber of commerce, the city staff, the economic development board, the industrial development board. And we took all the same outline that you have and prioritized them based off of the priorities for each one of those uses. And then we met with them as a group to figure out how they can share resources. So phase one for the school might not be phase one for the city, but something the city's doing could overlap with what the school's doing, so both of them can happen a lot sooner. So for example, we're working with travel right now on their sewer treatment facility. And there's a grant out there by ADM that pays you 50 cents back on the dollar compared to things that are green infrastructure, all the way down to the parking and landscape of the building. They're not saying leave, just green infrastructure. And it's a payback, it's not a, it's not a tip, it's not a bond, it's not a fine. They actually give you the money back if you show you spent it. That's 50 cents on the dollars back to the toward another project. We are working with the city of Coleman on the citywide and now countywide Greenway plan. And when we got involved, we were really concerned about the infrastructure throughout the city. Every couple of years, they're using TAP funds, transportation enhancement funds, to improve some of their downtown blocks. So every two years, we put about a half a million dollars into two to three blocks of redevelopment. And they wanted to do the Greenway on top of it, but we were able to find out that if we do them both together and overlap the Greenway on top of the infrastructure improvement plan, everybody won, there's more federal funds involved with that. So now the TAP funds are getting into Safe School Route Funds, some other ADM core funds, there's a lot of those things. And I love the sewer plan and Mill Creek. Those are all overlapping each other, so maybe that priority might jump up because there's revenue source back to it. Again, we work with Coleman, so we work with the Aquatic Center. We know what the future plans are, where they have some new stuff coming out in the next year and a half, we'll see more revenue coming in there. Those facilities also took straying off of other facilities they have. So their police, fire, city employees, everybody gets use their Aquatic Center as their rec center as well. So they're taking straying off other buildings or other pieces of buildings that might have been renovated or expanded based off of use or, say, for example, growth in the police department. They can have space in the existing police department if they'll take their gym away, and they all get to go to the Aquatic Center. And because firemen and police have different hours, they get different access to the center. So I mean, there's a lot of things here that we're hearing. I love, I really did love the plan. I think there's a lot to be done between Main Street, parking rec, the school, the city. I think the thing to do from the city side, this is why I wanted us to come up and meet, and I didn't know this was going to be, I thought it was going to be like a little small closed door, just brainstorming some things. I think if you can get that plan into more of a strategic plan that talks about which one of those funding sources are, which a lot of it's been done, especially with the school and the sewer, and figure out if you can find revenue from some of the earlier phases that pay for later phases. And prioritize that, prioritize it that way, so maybe you don't have to borrow as much on bond if at all. And then we can bring in, we got two grant writers in Fort Alabama, one in the Shoals, one in the Hospital, that can, we can sit down with that strategic plan and say, here's what we got, here's what we need, how can we do it? Because the allot plan, that's their 80/20 typical match. When you're talking about that $1 million, that is their typical 80/20 match. But you can tie other things into it that might get funded to that same improvement plan that might go a little further than those intersections if you can deal with. But now's the time, and when you look at it all at 30,000 feet, you probably find a lot of overlap where you can save some time and money and get all the different groups in the city working together to do so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Tom. I think it's great that he worked with Coleman a lot, and we hear a lot about Coleman. It kind of mirrors what we could do. I think we can have our own Coleman right here at Fort Payne.
I'm sure we've got Tony enough.
Oh, I got to tell you, number one speed dial.
Well, I'm going to say that Time's Journal is going to strongly support this idea. I don't know how anyone can look at this in this presentation way that we have, I mean, it's unbelievable. I mean, citizens, we need this, and we don't need it for present time, we need it for our future. And so, yes, we're going to come out and strongly support it.
Well, now, I appreciate Wade's time, I appreciate Tony's time, the school, Jimmy, I appreciate your time. It's just time for us to all get on the same page and work together and not duplicate services, you know, move forward in a strategic, smart plan that works for all of us, not just each of us individually. And I think that's where we can make large wins for Fort Payne, honestly.
I'll agree. I think we need to have a plan. I think we need to prioritize. Not anything Wade presented that I disagree with, I like the plan, but we need to prioritize. And, you know, grants, if there's grant money available, I'm all for it. You know, they help us tremendously if there's sewer grants, CDPG, or whatever kind of grants that we can get for funding the projects. And we need to, you know, we just got to prioritize and work with the grants and whatever we have available.
We just took advantage of that million-dollar deal that we're doing sewer related.
Yes.
You guys did.
Yeah.
I can't applaud you enough on doing what you've done and what you have to work with. But we're going to have to take that step.
We're very proud.
I know you don't like it, but...
I, you know, I've been moving on solid. I've been conservative 21 years, and I, you know, it's hard to change.
And I appreciate you talking with us. We've had some good talks about this, and I think we all want to town it as good as we can. And this is not a fight between anybody. This is just, we want to agree to disagree, that's fine, but we've got to make a decision, and the sooner we make it, the better. And then that gives us the ability to put this plan in play. If we don't make that first step, we don't need planning. But if we get all the free money we can get, we don't have to float any bonds. And I guarantee you, if we have to hire grant writers to give us free money, it's well worth the money.
Exactly. I mean, and there's so many things, and I know that Tony, Brian, myself, and James from Atterhalts Office drove through town and, you know, just like our sidewalks, and they're on Highway 11, there's probably opportunities there to get some funding for that. We just have to be smart about it and strategic.
Let me say two or three things. First of all, when I ran for election, I made the statement that I would veto any sales tax increase. And I found out after a couple of years of being in office that I didn't know near as much as I thought I knew. And I backed up at that time, and when we discussed it in the auditorium that time, that if the council saw fit to increase it, that I would not object to it. I haven't changed my mind. I think that Wade's done an extremely good job of getting all the facts together. I know there will be some opposition. There's opposition to anything you ever do. Do we absolutely have to have this? We could survive without it, we're surviving now. Could we prosper? That's questionable. That's really questionable. I would not recommend that the money be earmarked because earmarking just, it just hires your hands so much. A lot of times, you've got things that you need to do, and you can't do it because the money's earmarked, and our gas tax money is a lot of it that way. You've got to have certain projects that you can fit into the category. So I'm, I support the project. I hope that we would have other discussion, probably will at the next meeting as proper. And listen to anybody that has objections to it, and I'd like to say, I'm sure we will have some. But anyway, I hate to break a promise, and I made the promise that I would veto a sales tax increase, but sometimes your reasoning just needs to change a little bit, and I think I have. And I appreciate the efforts that go into this, I really do.
I would actually like to hear from our city treasurer, who sees our finances daily and knows that, and ask you the question, if we continue in the way that we're going right now without any increase, do you, where do you see us in two, three years?
I feel like we only have a few years left when we're going, before we would have to do something drastic. That's the bottom line.
I'm like Jimmy. I've been here at Fort Payne for one month and 10 days longer than Jimmy has because I was born that much before he was. We graduated high school together in 1967. I wear several hats sitting here today. I'm the water, I'm the school board attorney, I'm the attorney for the city, but I don't take both of those hats, and the only hat I want on today is a citizen of Fort Payne. My father graduated from Fort Payne High School, I graduated. My kids graduated, and my grandkids are working on it. During the course of that time, there have been people who had to step up and make tough, hard decisions. One of them remarkably enough was Jimmy Durham's daddy, James B. Durham, Sr., when he was the president.
the president or the chairman of the Board of Education. And there was a lot of criticism about buying land halfway to Valley Head to put our school system on. There was a lot of criticism and a lot of negativity in 1957 when the leaders of the city of Fort Payne stepped up and moved us out of the county system and into the, and into our own city system. Jimmy and I went to school in a really old high school, one that would make the current high school look new. The kid next to me got hit in the head with falling plaster one day during math class, woke him up. But I don't want my grandkids going to that kind of school and I don't want their kids going to that kind of school. And it takes, and I don't want our sewer system not working, I don't want our downtown looking depleted and I don't want to become another Coleman. I want to be Fort Payne, I want to be better than Coleman. And we are better than Coleman.
That's right.
I don't care what they got. And the only way it's gonna happen is if the people sitting at this table step up. I'm not asking as your lawyer, I'm not asking as a school board, I'm asking as a citizen of Fort Payne, I voted for you and I want you to step up and I want you to do this and I want you to pass this one cent sales tax because I want Fort Payne, when my kids are my age, to be the best it's been, it's been a great ride for Jimmy and I. If this was a football game, Jimmy and I are in the two-minute drill because the time is closing in fast, but I want it to be a better place. And so I'm asking you as a citizen to do this and do it at the next meeting because it just has all sorts of possibilities. Thanks, I appreciate you letting me say that.
And that's what it boils down to, is the quality of life for, for our families, for everyone in here, for my grandkids, your grandkids, and I, I want them to have better than I have. I want them to, I'm like you, I want better than Coleman. And I'd just like for Fort Payne to be that bright spot in the, in the state again. And I would ask Tricia, if you would, to make sure that this is publicizes, maybe we can get some public input and would we consider meeting at night?
I'm a great volunteer.
So that maybe people that are working could come.
I just want y'all to remember that if you get 50 people that call up and complain about this, that means 14,950 did not.
I agree.
Yeah, I think it's a chance to take a step in the right direction. I've not ever been a fan of raising taxes and would not actually step out and try to do that if you didn't see the need for it. When there is a need and when you, when you know that you've been put in a place to, to lead and to be that, that person that you need to be for Fort Payne, to take Fort Payne to the next level, we've got to look at all options. We can't, we can't hold anything back and I agree, we, you know, we need to look at these projects and we need to prioritize and see what needs to be done. And we need to look at every age group, just as Wade has laid out on the, on the PowerPoint and help every, every age group and do something to move us forward. Anybody else got anything to add? We really appreciate you coming. Feel free to, you know, any comments you come up with, you know, we're available anytime. Red, Johnny, you have anything?
No, it's, it's a great plan, so I agree with Wade, a lot of things. Like I said, I've been serving for a long time and as long as everybody's talking, everybody's sitting down, you're coming up with a plan and you're trying to get grant money, it's nice out there.
And it's not a burden. We don't, we don't, our goal isn't to put a burden on anyone. No citizen would we ever want a burden.
I, you know, I, I feel for our folks and all that. I know, it's like you mentioned, yeah. But I, I think, I think we can do this, but my thing is, we need to all communicate. We hadn't had that much. You know, we've had, we've had things done that have shown, and you know, you gotta have fun. You have all the federal funds that you're able to, that I think.
And I think we have to commit to the citizens that will do that.
And we have a pro hour.
Yeah. As a team.
Okay.
Plus per hour, does our next meeting, what time, what time, where are we?
I wanna do an evening meeting?
Ready, thanks. We're gonna do it at six.
It's a week, week from today, do it at six o'clock.
Six o'clock session at five.
I'll be out of town, but I'll afford anything.
We know how you're committed as a man.
For the 18th at six o'clock, work session at five. All right.
Thank you, thank you everyone.
Thank you all for coming. A special thanks to Tony for coming up and being with us today.